We call this meeting to order. The invocation is going to be given by the student minister Sharkees Smith-Stoltz from Cape Fear Christian Church.
Good morning, Father. Thank you for this time. Thank you that we can gather and carry on conversation. Let these hearts and these minds be towards you and leading for your kingdom. And I say all of this in your precious and holy name. Amen.
Amen. Everybody face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I was wondering if we could pull number two, three, and four for some quick comment and some minor clarification.
Sure.
Thank you. And although with that, I'll move that we adopt number one, the approval of the minutes. Or you want, we'll just do eight and do all at once.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Number two is the adoption of budget amendments. It's BA 25-045. This is something for, from the sheriff. Is John here? Excuse me, Chief Deputy?
Good morning.
Morning. Hey, Stephanie. Chief Deputy, I just wanted to make a quick compliment to you on this one. I know that quite often we go back and forth about having a larger explanation for a number of the items that are in here. And BA 25-045, although it's small, $6,000, the explanation that you gave was wonderful. And I thank you. It brings a lot of clarity and makes us understand a little bit more about where the flow of those funds come from and where they go. I just wanted to say thank you in public and appreciate hearing the comments I've made and adjusting to it.
Thank you for your support. Thank you.
Of course. Thank you. Number three is the first reading of the solid waste franchise agreement for forever clean portable toilets. Joe, I know we spoke briefly on the way in. I just wanted to make sure.
Good morning.
I know that we made the comment, sometimes the name doesn't tell the whole thing. Just want to make sure that we don't have a liquid pump out at the landfill.
That's correct. No North Carolina landfill is permitted to accept liquid waste.
Mm-hmm. So this company has, is expanding their services to add for construction debris or something along those lines?
Yes, sir. At most construction sites, they will have portable toilets delivered and they also use dumpsters. So that's their strategy or business model is to be able to provide both services with one vendor.
Great. And that's why, that's why we have the franchise agreement with these. It's for their debris that they're dropping off.
Yes, sir. It'll be primarily construction debris.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And number four, consideration of a resolution to support the North Carolina Department of Transportation's request for contingency funds to install a traffic signal at the intersection of Castlehan Road and Parmley Road, which is overall is a terrific thing. I know that intersection is already busy, about to become more busy if I understand this is where we're going to be putting the new Castlehan fire station.
Correct.
Ms. Roth, thank you. The question I had about it is that it also includes $150,000 from the county. The question is, where are those funds coming from? Because normally, we do not have anything to do with the roads. And do we know where the WMPO is in this? Quite often, we rely on them and their bank account for things like this, but obviously not in this case.
So I will turn it over to Eric, and I believe Chief Hall is here today as well. From my understanding, I will say, I believe that that $150,000 was part of the project planning for the fire station. And so that was something that had been in discussion prior to this request, where DOT is just asking as part of this resolution to have our support for asking for the additional funds they need from their division.
Rebecca is correct. That cost was anticipated in the project budget and is built into the overall budget for that fire station.
Right. But Eric, back to my first question, we don't deal with roads. It's quite clear, orders from the state. But in this case, we are supplying money for this traffic light. Why is the, is there a stand by the Wilmington Metropolitan Planning Organization, WMPO? Have they provided a recommendation or why are they not more involved, I guess?
Commissioners Apple, before they provide an answer, think to some degree of the county and the role of a developer in this regard. There are transportation improvements that the owner of the project must make. And so it could very well be that as part of the permitting process, DOT identified a traffic light as part of the improvement plan. And so just, there are those situations, maybe not in this case, but as the county, when we do a project, we do have an obligation, just as a private developer does, to put in the improvements necessary to receive all associated approvals from the regulatory agencies.
Commissioner Sapp, I was actually about to comment the same thing. And it makes sense to me that as the county built a new fire station, there would be times you would need to stop, make a stop there so that the trucks can go out. And that would be an investment on the county to partner with NC DOT on that light. So that makes sense to me, but I'm sure the chief might say the same thing, but that makes sense to me that we would partner on that.
Good morning, Commissioners. That is why the chief and I are here. That's a regular occurrence, that we would have off-site improvements. It could be a traffic signal, it could be a turn lane, it could be a variety of things that we somewhat negotiate with the entity to agree upon as we're developing a parcel. So, yep, county manager is correct.
Yeah, thank you, Chris. That gave me a different way to look at it. And I, and thank you, Commissioner Pierce, for that. One other, just quick thought on that for those people, I know sometimes on a neighborhood level, people say, gee, why can't we just throw a stoplight in? The cost amount, this overall cost is the reason why, at $536,000 to put in a single stoplight. It's kind of a useful reminder, oh yeah, it costs half a million dollars to put in a single stoplight. So it's a lot of money. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next is presentation of service awards.
Commissioners, good morning.
Good morning.
Everyone had a happy Easter. It's always an honor to be with the board. I say this every month, but it's particularly exciting when we have the chance to recognize folks that have provided tremendous service to New Hanover County, sometimes in the form of retirement after a long career, service awards reaching milestones, and also new employees. And we have at least one person in each of those categories today. And so thank you for the opportunity to recognize what I argue are the best and the brightest that are doing public work. And so with that, I'm going to recognize Sergeant Seeger. He would come forward. Sergeant, do you mind if I read about your illustrious career? Do you mind standing next to me, giving me that honor? Sergeant Seeger is retiring after 26 years. I'll tell you what, why don't you stand right there? And I stand right here. Sergeant Dominique Seeger is retiring from his role in the patrol division of the New Hanover County Sheriff's Office after 26 years of distinguished service. Thank you, sir, for that. Dominique began his career with the county in 1998 as a school resource officer. Three years later, he was promoted to the detectives' division, where he also served as a member of the dive unit. His career continued to reflect his dedication and adaptability with assignments in support services and ultimately a return to the SRO role and role as a uniform patrol officer before his promotion to uniform patrol sergeant in 2008. As a sergeant, he led with distinction across multiple units, including the bike unit, the downtown housing task force, and most recently at Wilmington International Airport. Throughout his career, Sergeant Seeger has been known for his charisma, his warmth, and sincere approachability. Whether engaging with the community or supporting fellow officers, he consistently went out of his way to help others. His strong commitment to public service and community engagement has left a lasting impression on colleagues and citizens alike. Although he never sought accolades, Sergeant Seeger was honored with a stellar award after being recognized by a citizen for his professionalism and accountability. While Sergeant Seeger's never sought accolades, I think he certainly deserves this recognition and this accolade of having served so honorably for 26 years. Sergeant, thank you for your career. Thank you for keeping us all safe, and we congratulate you on your retirement. Well done, sir. What a career, a lot of things in the sheriff's office. With that, I'd like to begin to recognize employees that have reached significant milestones. And we have four folks with us this morning. And when I call your name, if you would, please come forward. I want to be the first to shake your hand and thank you for what you do and then invite you to visit with the board. And so this morning, we have one person that we're going to recognize with a five-year service award, and that's Natalie Myers in the tax office. Natalie, thank you for what you do. So Commissioners, I noticed Natalie's actually survived two revaluations. If she's here five years, she came at the close of one and has been involved in the rough road of two. Commissioners, we're going to recognize someone with 10 years of service to New Hanover County. And this morning, it's an honor to recognize Tyler Lockamy in information technology. Tyler, thank you for what you do. Commissioners, we're going to move forward to 15 years of service. And it's a personal honor and pleasure to recognize with 15 years of service Lisa Wirtzbocker in the county manager's office. And it's always special when people have milestones, but when you get to 20 years with one organization, that really gets into rare air, and especially doing the work in our community and our organization, because people expect, as they deserve, demand and expect much, and all of our folks do that. And so with 20 years of service, Samuel Gaston, facilities management. Samuel, thank you. The Commissioners, we're going to proceed to new hires, and we've got two folks that are joining us this morning. And so I say it, I said it at the beginning, but I say it every month, it really takes something special to be hired into this organization. We truly only hire the best and the brightest. And the dimension that separates them from really deep applicant pools is you have to demonstrate a commitment to public service. And so everybody that is hired into this organization, everybody that is here for five years or 20 years or to retire, that's the thing that everyone shares in common. And so, welcome to the organization. When I call your name, if you would, please stand up. We want to give you a proper welcome. And so we'll begin this morning with Michelle Blackear in the permitting office. Michelle, thank you for coming to work with us. And also joining the team is Sarah Farmer in public health. Sarah, thank you for coming to work with us. Thank you to you both for being here this morning. So Commissioners, unless I've mismanaged the paper, I believe that concludes employee recognition this morning. Very much so. It's a stark improvement over last month. It's, they make a difference. I had glasses on, but these, I just see better. So thank you very much to the board.
Number six is consideration of the New Hanover County Juvenile Crime Provincial Council funding recommendation. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. What a great day to live and work in New Hanover County. Pleasure to be back with you again. Jay Corpening, I continue to chair the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. Two action items for you today. One is the approval of our spending plan. The breakdown is in your materials. Happy to answer any questions you have about it. Second is to approve our updated bylaws. We've got a highlight sheet that illustrates the minor updates that we made to our bylaws this year. So bring those two action items to you for approval today. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
The, I noticed that the local in-kind, you know, it's a match or not, but the local in-kind of $128,000. What does that mean?
So in-kind typically is facilities. For example, the psychological services and community service and restitution are housed both in our juvenile justice building and in 320 Chestnut. Some of the personnel are allocated budget-wise, in part funded by JCP, JCPC dollars in part, county salary, depending on their job breakdown.
So it's facilities, basically?
Primarily.
Yeah, great. Thanks, Jay. That's all.
Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
Anything? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Motion to approve, if that's appropriate at this time?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Number seven is consideration in 42nd Annual National Travel and Tourism Week proclamation.
Would you like me to read that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'll read that first. The 42nd Annual National Travel and Tourism Week proclamation, whereas travel and tourism benefit New Hanover County's workforce and supports our local economy, and whereas National Travel and Tourism Week celebrates the U.S. travel community and travel's essential role in stimulating economic growth, cultivating vibrant communities, creating quality job opportunities, inspiring new business, and elevating the quality of life for Americans every day. And whereas in the United States, travel generated an economic output of 2.9 trillion in 2024, serving as an essential catalyst for a productive U.S. economy. Domestic leisure travel spending reached 876 billion in 2024. Travel spending generated 89 billion in state and local taxes across the U.S. in 2024. Eight million workers are directly employed within the travel industry. And whereas in North Carolina, in 2023, direct visitor spending across the state totaled $35.6 billion. Tourism accounts for 6.2% of total employment in the state. New Hanover County ranks eighth in visitor spending among the state's 100 counties. And whereas in New Hanover County, visitor spending infuses millions of dollars into our local economy each year, helping to fund beach renourishment, the convention center, lifeguard programs, and more. Room occupancy tax collections in 2024 exceeded $24.4 million, setting a new benchmark. In 2023, visitor spending was estimated at more than $1.1 billion, representing an increase of 5.9% over 2022. In 2023, travel generated approximately 77.3 million in state and local tax receipts, thereby contributing to our quality of place and providing 323.85 tax savings to each county resident. The local travel industry provided more than 6,790 jobs in 2023 and supported a payroll of 278.9 million. Travel is essential to the county's economic success, and whereas this proclamation recognizes the significance of, the significant effect of travel industry in our local economy and profound impact it has on the lives of New Hanover County citizens. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners that May 4th through the 10th, 2025, is recognized as National Travel and Tourism Week in New Hanover County, approved this 21st day of April, 2025 by William E. Reivenberg, Chair. And we will have Kim Hoffen from our CBB present.
Well, good morning, and thank you for your adoption of this proclamation this morning. On behalf of the New Hanover County Tourism Development Authority, I would like to thank you for your ongoing support of tourism here in New Hanover County. We're honored that Commissioner Pierce serves as a member of the TDA Board of Directors, and we've also had many past commissioners that have served in that position as well. Travel and tourism is, or by signing of this proclamation, it officially kicks off the local tourism industry's annual celebration to celebrate the U.S. travel community and tourism's essential role in stimulating economic growth, cultivating vibrant communities, creating quality jobs, opportunities, and inspiring new businesses, and elevating the quality of life for our citizens every day. We hope that each of you will plan to attend the Convention and Visitors Bureau's annual travel rally breakfast, which will be held on Wednesday, May the 7th, when we're going to celebrate our industry and recognize the important role that the more than 6,790 hospitality employees play in making New Hanover County a popular and desirable travel destination. During this year's program, the CBB will present the findings and recommendations from the Tourism Development Authority's first-ever Tourism Destination Master Plan to create a vision for New Hanover County's future that aligns tourism development, opportunities, and impacts with community needs, balancing destination growth and resident quality of life. We also will be recognizing recipients of this year's Tourism Star and Jane Peterson Tourism Legacy Awards. So again, we'd like to invite each of you to be there if you have the opportunity, and also would just again like to say thank you for your continued support of tourism. Thank you.
Move the proclamation.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question real quick? Kim, how long have you been with the CBB?
You're trying to get my age right now. I've actually been with the CBB since 1989, so I've been there 36 years.
And I just want to say a big thank you to you and your team. You are a big part of why the travel industry in New Hanover County is so successful. So I just wanted to say thank you. I mean, you were there from day one, from the beginning, so thank you for where you've taken us in tourism in New Hanover County.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Ms. Feath, why don't you come on up? And with your crew as well, I guess, yeah. Thank you. What we'll do is I'll read the proclamation and then give you a chance to talk and about all the good things you've done and will continue to do. Thank you for being here, both. Child abuse prevention month proclamation. Whereas in fiscal year 2023 and 2024, Carousel Child Advocacy Center received 351 child abuse case referrals, with 140 of those referrals concerning children in New Hanover County. And whereas children are our most vulnerable members, as well as our most valuable resources, helping to shape the future of our communities. And whereas child sexual abuse, physical abuse, emotional abuse, and neglect are serious problems affecting every community and can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical consequences throughout an individual's lifetime, impacting future generations. And whereas children who have access to safe adults and protective environments and who live in families with access to concrete economic and social supports are less likely to experience abuse and neglect. And whereas positive childhood experiences, or PCEs, such as loving caregivers and safe, stable, and nurturing relationships can help mitigate trauma and the negative impact of adverse childhood experiences, ACEs, promoting the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. And whereas nurturing positive childhoods and preventing child abuse is possible because of the partnerships created among families, intervention and prevention advocates, child welfare professionals, educators, health providers, community and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and local, state, and national governments. And whereas addressing child abuse requires a shared commitment to changing social norms, removing barriers, supporting families, and encouraging education and action across all sectors of society. And whereas New Hanover County is committed to preventing child abuse and recognizes the importance of investing in prevention efforts, intervention services, and responsive systems that ensure all children and families are healthy and thriving. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners that April, 2025 is recognized as Child Abuse Prevention Month in New Hanover County. All citizens, organizations, and community leaders are encouraged to support efforts that raise awareness, strengthen families, and help prevent child abuse. Adopted this 21st day of April, 2025 by the hand of William E. Reivenberg, Chair. The floor is yours, Amy.
Thank you so much, Commissioners. My name is Amy Feath, and I am the executive director of Carousel Child Advocacy Center, the child advocacy center serving New Hanover County. Child advocacy centers here, like everywhere else in the community, are doing kind of four things. One is the forensic medical evidence collection and forensic interviews for children who have been reported to have experienced physical or sexual abuse. The second thing we do is family advocacy. Third thing we do is, of course, that trauma treatment so that children who have experienced physical or sexual abuse can do that hard work of healing so that they can just get back to the business of being kids. And the fourth thing that we do is, of course, going upstream so that we can work as a community to make sure that children are not experiencing child abuse at all and doing primary prevention, secondary prevention, and of course, awareness and outreach experiences. And I'm here to tell you that to date in this fiscal year, we've seen 235 unduplicated children at Carousel for forensic and medical evaluation. Through the efforts of New Hanover County, we have been able to at Carousel serve, actually reach in our prevention efforts, 6,500 adults to educate- 6,500 adults, to educate them on what to look for in child sexual abuse, how do you respond if a child picks you as their caring adult or their trusted adult, and what to do if you are given that golden opportunity that a child discloses to you, what is your mandated reporting responsibility in North Carolina. In addition, we've had over 1,000 child trauma sessions. We've established ongoing school-age and adolescent problem sexual behaviors group that is a therapeutic alternative to actually sending children who initiate in sexual behaviors, rather than putting them into the prison pipeline, and over 5,000 hours of family advocacy and forensic medical services support, coordination for unmet needs, and court accompaniment and beyond. But I'm here to tell you that a child advocacy center does not do that in a vacuum. We are here doing it with many of the people that you've already recognized this morning, public health, sheriff's office, district attorneys, rape crisis, who you're going to hear from in just a second, our Departments of Social Services, who are behind us right now, standing here as our partners today. So it isn't without a village that is doing this work, and that is what the Child Advocacy Center model is all about. And so we thank you for doing this proclamation, and we thank you for recognizing April as Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month.
Amy, tell everybody, when a child comes to y'all, what it costs.
So for us to be able to do that door-to-door forensic medical evaluation, it's a team of three people for every one of those sessions. And so door-to-door, it's a three-to-five-hour process, and then down the road, maybe three years, when there's actually a testimony in court, there's expert testimony of the forensic interviewer and the medical provider. So all tax tag and title, that costs us $2,500.
Right. But you, but you get it all done at one time?
We get it all done at one time.
Kids don't have to tell the story over and over.
They don't tell the story over and over, and that's why New Hanover County decided, actually, it's our 25th birthday. We opened in 2000, and Carousel is celebrating its 25th birthday this year. And we decided as a community, it wasn't okay for kids to go one place, and then to another place, and then to another place. We wanted them to come one place where they could feel safe, and then law enforcement, DSS, victims advocates, medical professionals could come to that one place where the child felt safe, to ask the questions that needed to be asked, to do the evaluation that needed to happen, and carousel around the child, and hence the name Carousel Center for our community.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Good. Amy, you just mentioned your 25th anniversary. Thank you so much, and congratulations and all that.
Thank you.
You just gave us a brief overview of what happened prior to 2000. That would all be handled by law enforcement, correct? All those efforts you're talking about?
So all of that was happening, kind of, depending on where it came through the door. So some of those calls were coming to DSS, some would come in through 911 to law enforcement. Sometimes they would get coordinated. Sometimes it would happen that they would talk to DSS first, then law enforcement. Sometimes they would find out about each other at different stages of each of their individual investigations. Now they work together because we work as a multidisciplinary team and really coordinate our efforts to make sure that we're walking lockstep and barrel to ensure the best chance for justice for that child, and the best health and well-being for that family, whether it's a child protective services issue where it's the family unit, or whether it's a child, a criminal justice matter where we're looking to hold a perpetrator accountable where possible.
The focus remains on the health and the well-being of the child.
Absolutely, every time. Whether the criminal justice part of it can happen, because oftentimes we don't have enough evidence to actually do that, we still need to make sure that that child and their adult caregiver and any other family members are going to be healthy and well and resilient to be able to, be able to move forward in a successful way regardless.
Thank you. I know you mentioned earlier that this doesn't happen in a vacuum, that you work very closely with our DSS office. I just wanted to note that Tanya Jackson is here. Tanya, could you stand up and be recognized? Thank you for all your good work in working with Carousel Center. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and again, thank you for all your good work.
Hey, Amy.
Hey, how are you?
Good. I know I've worked with you for a long time.
Yes.
When I was doing my MBA degree, I got to intern, well, we didn't intern, we just did projects with y'all. And I know how tough it is to do the job you do. I think you, I've taken the tour as well. If no one's ever been, had the opportunity to go take a tour to see what you do, I think it's important to do that, to really get the depth of what goes on in these circumstances. I would just say, and I know I've talked to you about this myself, as a child survivor myself, I know how important the work is that you do. And I know how tough it is to get justice for children that don't, you know. I think what I like about the model is your doors are always open. It's available, it's not, it doesn't cost. It's, you know, it's confidential. It's everything it takes to get justice and also repair the damage that's being done to children. So I appreciate everything you do all the time. I meant all of what y'all do. I'm very proud to know you as people. So, thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie, and I appreciate you sharing. And yes, we do not charge children to come to the service. When they're ready to do that hard work of healing, we're ready for, with them and their caregiver. And I do welcome the community, if they would like to schedule a time to come and kick the tires and look under the hood, we are their Child Advocacy Center, and we take that very seriously. So we will schedule that nights, weekends. Of course, not while children are getting services, but we do welcome them to come and see.
We've got the lip sync battle coming up, too.
We do. Saturday is our big fundraiser, the Making Legends Local Lip Sync Battle. Were you volunteering to be one of our come-to-the-table, last-minute, 11th-hour acts? We'd welcome you to come on up.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the proclamation.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next is Sexual Assault Awareness Month Proclamation. Whereas April is recognized as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, a time to bring attention to the serious issues of sexual violence and encourage efforts to prevent it in our communities. And whereas this year's SAM theme, Together We Act, United We Change, highlights our collective power to create safer environment for all. And whereas sexual assault affects individuals and families across all walks of life, impacting their well-being, safety, and sense of security. And whereas education, awareness, and community involvement play a critical role in preventing sexual violence by promoting respect, personal responsibility, and the importance of speaking out against harmful behaviors. And whereas supporting survivors, holding offenders accountable, and ensuring access to resources for those affected by sexual violence strengthen the fabric of our communities, and uphold the values of justice and dignity for all. And whereas the Rape Crisis Center of Coastal Horizons provides essential services, including 24-hour crisis response, individual counseling, and advocacy to victims in New Hanover County Pender, Brunswick, Dupont County, ensuring that those impacted by sexual violence receive the help and support they deserve. And whereas working together to foster a culture and prioritizes safety, respect, and accountability helps ensure that every individual can live free from the threat of sexual violence. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners that April, 2025, is recognized as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in New Hanover County. All residents are encouraged to take part in efforts to prevent sexual violence, support survivors, and help foster a community rooted in safety, dignity, and respect for all. Adopted this 21st day of April, 2025 by William E. Reivenberg. All yours.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners and members of the community. My name is Chelsea Kroom. I'm the Program Director of the Rape Crisis Center, and this is Amanda Piner. She's our advocacy coordinator. And we have Amy Feath, obviously, behind us. I want to sincerely thank the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners for recognizing April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. This proclamation, your proclamation, is a powerful statement that our community stands with survivors. By acknowledging this month, you are helping to break the silence and stigma that too often surrounds these conversations. You're creating a space for survivors to be seen, heard, and believed. And that, to us and to the community, has profound meaning. As we move through April, I hope that this month will be a reminder of both the work we've done and the work that still lies ahead. Let it spark dialogue, encourage education, and inspire action. Thank you again for your leadership, your compassion, and your commitment to making New Hanover County a safer, more supportive place for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next is Consideration of Resolution for New Hanover County to sponsor USS Battleship North Carolina's application for North Carolina Division of Water Quality Order Resources Grant Program. Heather.
Good morning. Thank you for having us today. This resolution is brought to you through the Soil and Water Department in partnership with USS North Carolina. The Battleship is asking for this sponsorship upon the recommendation of the Division of Water Quality and Resources because the Battleship must partner with a local partner in order to receive these grant funds. And I'd like to turn it over to Teri D'Amio, the Project Manager for the Battleship, if you have any questions.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for this opportunity.
Anybody have any questions?
Mr. Chair, I do, yeah. Teri, thank you for being here. Drew, thank you for that opening presentation. If I understand this right, the, what's on the line here is 1.2 million dollars. Is that correct for the project?
That is correct, yes.
And the way this is set up, there's an MOU between the county and the Battleship Commission that puts both of us on the line for a lot of responsibility for this project.
The MOU or MOA can be structured in a way that would determine responsibility and roles. So although the county would serve as the local sponsor, a lot of the liability and responsibility for project completion and financial oversight could rest with the Battleship.
I guess my main question there, and I just, I'm looking for a little more comfort level.
Okay.
Is, do you have the capacity? Because, you know, in that, in reading the MOU or in the agreement.
Right.
Obtaining all of the state and federal permits, and that we, you, you or we will supervise the construction of the project, will obtain suitable spoils, disposal areas, these are all heavy lifts. Do you have the capacity at the Battleship Commission? And I'm curious as to why the Chair of the Commission is not here today, Teri. Could you, there's a lot of responsibility on the line. I just want to make sure that we're all comfortable with it.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So all of the permits are already acquired. The project construction is currently being managed. I'm overseeing project management for the construction. The spoils question is part of the construction package, and so that is being managed, you know, as part of the sequence of that. The grant does require a local match, and the Battleship has those funds in hand already to, so there would be no financial impact to the county. And my apologies for the Chairman of the Commission not being here today with me.
That was almost the perfect answer, Teri. I'm delighted to hear that you already have that much in the bag, as it were. Who is the contractor on the job?
This is Atlantic Coast Industrial.
Great. And you have a signed contract with them?
We do, yes.
And does it match up with the 1.2 million dollars, or is that just the matching part?
The contract with ACI is for the work that is being done currently. This would be an extension to their contract.
Okay.
For the 1.2 million. The local match is 33%, non-federal monies, so that would be around 429,000.
Is there any possibility of the federal money being hung up or delayed?
This is money in hand. It's the Department of Water Resources, and actually, this is a quick release of these monies for the situation that we're all experiencing.
Again, excellent answer. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I feel a lot better.
Mr. Chair, I'll just note that there is a slight typographical error in number seven of the resolution. Just ask that we correct that prior to the signature yourself.
And Mr. Chair, if I might make a comment while you're looking at that. Thank you for this initiative, and especially for going after the grant to do it. It's not costing taxpayers of the county any money. It improves the safety of our visitors. So thank you for pursuing that. I'd like to see us pursue more grants to things that would take that burden off the citizens. So thank you. Hopefully it'll be successful.
Well, thank you. And I'd like to just state that the project has received a fair amount of attention. In fact, we have been featured on PBS North Carolina State of Change episode that aired last week. There will be a live premiere of that same episode tomorrow in the Department, well, it's the North Carolina History Museum in Raleigh. I will be there. I'll be part of the panel afterwards. And part of the reason it has received so much attention is that it's really a unique and far-reaching way to address our tidal flooding. And we take, the Battleship takes seriously our role in providing a model for how other areas, other communities could address the same impacts. We know we're not the only one. But we, on behalf of the Battleship North Carolina, I'd like to thank the Commission for your consideration and support of this project, and would be honored to partner with the county in the success.
Mr. Chair.
Ongoing success.
I was gonna say, it's very difficult to restore wetlands, and it's clear it's needed because the flooding is bad. And if we want to keep accessing the Battleship as a resource for the city, the county, then we need to address the issues. Otherwise, that, otherwise, you know, I don't think that people have access. What you gotta do is look at the flooding pictures on here. But it is tough. I have read the article before I got elected about the restoration project out there. And like I said, it is very difficult to restore wetlands after the fact. So I think y'all are doing a great job, and I support this resolution.
Mr. Chair, I'll also just add that supporting this resolution is fully in line with a previously stated goal and objective of this body to preserve and protect as much of the western bank of the Cape Fear River as we can. I know that we have our staff working steadily on trying to find mechanisms and ways that we can do more than, more than just what's contemplated here, because this is critical, it's important, but it's really that entire portion of our community that we need to be trying to do something similar with. And I hope that we're gonna find some favorable outcomes based on our staff's work at some point in the near future.
Right.
Mr. Chair, if I can just add on to Commissioner Scalise's point, the good news is it's working. Being out there, it actually, the work that's been done, and I know it's still in progress, is actually doing what we thought it would do. It's diverting, you know, the daily flooding that's going in there, and you now have a dry place to park and to walk without, you know, having your ankles or halfway up your thigh, or thighs, but your, your... know, having your ankles or halfway up your thigh, or thighs, but your calves be wet. So congratulations on that part.
Thank you. That is correct. It is working. The wetland area that we recreated from an existing parking lot is worked remarkably well in capturing the high tides, allowing for the infiltration of that tidal water, and then releasing it back to the river at low tide. In addition to that, it has created wildlife habitat. Almost immediately, the birds started to hunt in that area, which meant that the small fish were coming in, and it was really functioning as a tidal wetland. The Battleship understands the importance of the wetlands on the west bank to act as a sponge for those tidal high tides. And so conservation of that land over there, of our adjacent land, our neighbor's area, is a priority to the Battleship, and we have been working with county staff to that end. So thank you.
Good.
Move approval of the resolution?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next is animal welfare report out in first reading amendment to animal control ordinance and fee schedule. Welcome.
Good morning. In the fall, New Hanover County, several residents of New Hanover County expressed concerns about animal welfare in the county. The Office of Strategy was pleased to pull together a group of these individuals, these residents that had concerns, and meet with our planning and land use team, our Sheriff's Office, and our legal team to explore what the concerns were and identify ways that we might be able to move forward to ensure that animals are protected within our community. The majority of the concerns were around regulating commerce, which is something that we do not have the jurisdictional authority to do. However, through the conversations, we were able to identify a couple of other opportunities for us to shore up and to clean up within our ordinances. And those were related to breeder requirements, encouraging owners to spay and neuter dogs and cats, as well as promoting responsible pet ownership. There was also an opportunity for us to evaluate the fees for several of, that are outlined in the ordinance. And our legal team is gonna go through some of the changes that the legal team and the Sheriff's Office have identified.
Good morning. We did take that opportunity to kind of clean up our ordinances. It has not been touched since 2012, so we figured it was time. It also hasn't really been touched since the Animal Services Unit came from the Health Department over to the Sheriff's Office. There were some antiquated items that needed to be cleaned out. We cleaned out the advisory committee because that was for the Public Health Department. That wasn't necessarily for the Sheriff's Office. We cleaned up some of the definitions that came from the animal welfare statutes and the federal animal welfare statutes. We had some confusion where there was like kennel was also being deemed as a breeder, a breeder was being deemed as a commercial breeder, a commercial breeder is deemed as a hobby breeder, so cleaned up those, matched up some numbers. We added in more of a mirror to the state statute for enforcement with dangerous dogs. I have personally litigated a couple of those cases and had some issues that needed to be clarified. So we tried to make sure that while we're allowed to have our own statute or ordinances, that were based in the statutes of North Carolina for better enforcement. Happy to answer any questions.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. Appreciate yours and everyone else's work on this important subject. One of the main takeaways for me is perhaps while, at least in my mind, I had hoped that we would do more, there are some limitations on what state law will allow us to do. So I'm going to take that as a charge to advocate at the state level for some potential changes. And I'm not asking you to respond to that. I'm just explaining to the community that whereas I had hoped that perhaps we would do more to address some of the issues that were highlighted by the community members, there are absolutely remaining opportunities, but they are going to require advocacy from people like me, advocacy from members of our community to the state level, and I'm committing to doing that right now.
And Commissioner Scalise, in response to your wants to have more teeth, so to speak, on the state level, I looked at all of those proposed bills that never made it and took some of that language and incorporated in ours.
Thank you, ma'am. Again, I appreciate your efforts here. I really do.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Karen, thank you for your work on this, and Chris as well. I appreciate. I know what kind of got this thing rolling was a particular business in town. I think it was the Puppy Place. And I know that's been brought up in the news several times. Did we send county staff out there? Was there a visit to it? And what was the result of that?
Yes, sir. Strategy and legal went out. We reviewed their paperwork. They were very forthcoming. They handed over all of their paperwork for their licensing that they have from the Department of Agriculture, because that is who monitors that type of commerce. It is not local. It is a state entity that handles that. Department of Agriculture made sure that they had all of what they needed. And then they bring in their products, so to speak, their puppies from another state. That is the federal Department of Agriculture that monitors that. So we looked at that and matched that up. Those also were, the paperwork is appropriate. We looked to see if there's anything for animal neglect that would fall underneath the criminal statutes. We did not see anything like that. We looked to see if there was anything that was not permitted. Even though it's a C business, it was permitted through the city. We didn't see anything that prohibited that. So based on our ordinances and the statutes that we have to follow being outside the Department of Agriculture, we did not find any violations.
Thank you for that, because that's been kind of a hanging thread that's out there. There was this kind of thought that they were running what we call loosely a puppy mill, and that turned out to not be the case, is what I'm hearing from you.
Based on what New Hanover County could look into, we did not see anything for that. There is no definition of puppy mill for North Carolina, and then the products coming from out of state, so that would be federal. So we couldn't necessarily answer that question, but we could see that all the licenseings were legit.
You didn't see any endangerment to the animals that were there? And it sounds like the owners were very forthcoming with all of their paperwork and everything that they were doing. In other words, it was an up-and-up business, correct?
Yes, sir. They actually reached out to us when they heard about the public interest and invited us to come and opened up their books.
Great. I just hate to have any business have a cloud over them as a part of this. So thank you for your work in that. Jennifer, I see you nodding your head there, so I take it that your experience is the same as Karen's.
Yes, that's correct.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for your work.
Mr. Chair, just a comment and to follow up with Commissioner Zappel's comments. We did have an outcry from the public and asked the county to look into this. Thank you all for doing our due diligence to make sure everyone was in compliance, and they are. And to Commissioner Scalise's point, we are doing all we can do on the county level. Want the public to hear that. But it is a state-level legislative issue, whatever the laws are. And when a business is in compliance, that is our job to make sure they're in compliance, which we've done that. And we'll continue to make sure folks are in compliance with the law of New Hanover County. But thank you, guys, for stepping in and doing the research, and I'd love to hear your comments.
Absolutely. So Commissioner Zappel, just to add to the response, even prior to the county insofar as the Office of Strategy as well as legal, looking into this and doing their own sort of independent investigation, if you will, the Sheriff's Office, you know, had multiple complaints of things like animal cruelty at that particular business, all of which, when investigated by the Sheriff's Office, were unfounded. So I think as a team, we can safely say that this particular business is operating within the confines, not only of county ordinance, but also with current state law.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to add, just talk about this being first reading. It's not gonna be up for final adoption until May 5th. So I assume the community, if they wanted to be able to add, or any of us wanted to be able to add anything, maybe, you know, to the ordinance, we can do so?
That's correct. We, this is the first reading. We have made this information available to the residents that participated in this process. Unfortunately, I did not see any of them here today, but they were made aware of this and of the changes, and the fact that if there were any comments that they had that they wanted to share, they could share that with you before the next meeting.
Okay. Yeah, because I've had some people reach out about it. And I guess, well, I personally have seen things, social media, you know, dogs getting loose, and I don't know that there necessarily hasn't been a mechanism or an opportunity for those folks to be able to come in and give comments. I know that we had a small group before, but since then, more people have reached out. So I would just let everybody know that it's not in, it's up for adoption May 5th. So this first reading is not final.
Is there a motion?
I don't think there is.
Motion to approve?
It just says, "Receive update."
I'm sorry?
We approve it for a second reading.
Second. Did you do the first motion?
I did.
Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next one is a public hearing script for, I mean, I'm sorry, proposing not to exceed 22 million installment financing capital projects and adoption of approved resolution August 20, April 21st. On April 7th, 2025, Board of Commissioners adopted a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of New Hanover County authorizing negotiation of an amendment to an installment financing contract directing the publication of notice with respect thereto declaring the intent of the county to reimburse itself for capital expenditures, from capital expenditures from proceeds thereof and providing for certain other related matters thereto. The board determined that it is in the best interest of the county to finance a construction of and improvements to various park facilities, including, but not limited to, improvements to Northern Regional Park, Smith Creek Park, and the redesign and replacement of Trails in Pier. Improvements to various community college facilities, acquisition of a replacement fire engine and other fire rescue equipment, D, improvements to the county's landfill facilities and equipment, E, other miscellaneous capital outlay, including but not limited to, the acquisition of various county vehicles and a new jail door system. The board is now conducting a public hearing concerning the installment financing contract and proposed 2025 projects and any other transactions contemplated therein and associated therewith. Is there a motion to open up the public hearing?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Each speaker will be allowed three minutes. And nobody has signed up to speak for it. Is there anything?
You covered it well, Chairman. If approved, the staff will submit an application for this debt to the local government commission by May the 6th, with the intent of it being approved by that commission at their June the 3rd meeting. The bond sale is scheduled for June the 12th, with the proceeds being received prior to the end of the fiscal year on June 26th.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, a couple of questions for Eric.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Eric, I'm just curious about the process. We sell the bonds. Do we receive all the money at once, or do we receive it in installments?
We receive it all at once.
I see. And then do we bank it so that we can collect some interest on it?
We do. We put it at a bank, and we earn interest until at which time we use it. Yes, sir.
I see. Have we done the calculation on that?
The general short-term rates we're earning right now is around 4% on our money.
So that, good. And how will this affect our overall bond rating, or, excuse me, our bond capacity? Will this lower, if we go out and borrow this, the 22 million, in a limited obligation bond, as opposed to a general obligation?
Sure. So we did a borrowing in the fall for the two fire stations and the north chase library. That was about 33 million dollars. This one's 22 million dollars. We're issuing about 55 million dollars in total debt this year. We're paying down principal of around 45 million dollars this year. So we will have a net add to our bond, our debt outstanding of about 10 to 12 billion dollars.
So our total capacity at this point is what?
Gosh, I want to say it's around 525 million, 530 million, something like that. Yes, sir?
That's how much we could borrow?
We had 432 million dollars outstanding at year-end. So just kind of doing the math I talked about, would be around 442 million projected at this year-end, a net increase of 10 million dollars due to the higher issuance.
I see. So that's how much we have that we're in debt with right now? Is that correct? Or do I have that backwards?
You got it right.
Yeah, okay. So we have a bond capacity, though, going forward. I know that I'm kind of looking over the horizon a little bit here, because we have other discussions coming up later this afternoon, I think, actually. So our capacity to be able to borrow more, will this 22 million dollars affect that total amount that we could borrow in the future?
Yes, sir. In rough terms, our debt capacity is in the 550 million range. I may be off by a little bit. We're in the 430 million range roughly of, what we've got out there by borrowing this money, that will cut into the existing debt capacity compared to if we had not borrowed it.
Okay. Thank you, Eric.
Anybody else?
No, sir.
Okay. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the county of New Hanover, North Carolina approving the installment financing contract and delivery thereof and providing for certain other related matters?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Next is committee appointments. First one is Cape Fear Public Utility Authority.
Nominate Hank Miller.
Second.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Janice Gaines.
Second.
Okay. We'll vote on the first one. We had a first and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 We'll need to vote on the second one.
Mr. Chair, I think on the New Hanover County Commission for Women, which I believe is the next one, I'd like to nominate Emily Mitchell.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
New Hanover County Hispanic-Latino Commission. Need three.
Mr. Chair, nominate for reappointment, Janet Howard and Maria Del Carmen Rodriguez. And the third one would be Wei Sang.
Your second?
I'll second the first two. I would like to nominate Rafael Toro for the third one, but I don't know how that works when you're doing three at once, so.
Oh, you can do each individually.
Okay.
We can do the first two, Howard and Rodriguez.
Rodriguez, yeah.
Rodriguez. So for those two, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
So the next one is?
Wei Sang.
Wei Sang. And who are you?
Rafael Toro.
So is there a motion for Sang?
Sang.
I did, yes.
So you're with who?
Sang.
Sang.
S-A-N-G, yes.
And Stephanie's with Toro?
Yes.
I'll second Toro.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
For who it is?
Mr. Chair, this is just a matter of process, and perhaps our county clerk can weigh in on this. I don't believe that there are seconds required for appointments. And I, you know, that's actually a real question. Ms. Cole, is, could you refresh me on this?
The board is cleaner if the board does do a second. It is not required, but it is cleaner.
It is not required. I see.
It's cleaner.
At the same time.
It's also cleaner because it helps me know who voted in favor and who did not.
Yeah.
I would also ask, why would these nominations be any different from any other motion that we make? Motion practice requires a first and a second.
Mr. Attorney.
So by the board's rules of procedure, a second is required. And it says, "A nomination for an appointment must be seconded in order to be considered by, considered for a vote by the board." And that's under Rule 31.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney.
And who, who were the three who voted for Toro?
Toro, yeah. Toro, yeah.
I voted for Toro.
I did.
Thank you.
Next is New Hanover County Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee.
I'm going to nominate Mary Ann Eisenhower Wall.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next, Southeastern Economic Development Commission.
Charm Brantley.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The Healing Place of New Hanover County Board of Directors.
I'd like to nominate Louise Coggins for reappointment.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now we have the public comment, and each speaker will be allowed three minutes, and I believe there's a little clock right there in front of you.
Yes.
They'll start it, but you got three minutes, and I'll let you know when you get about 10 seconds to go. First is Heather Miller.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to start by saying what an honor it is to be here and witness the service awards that were introduced earlier. I think it's also important that while that is an honor, it's my understanding that a group of county firemen were also supposed to be recognized today, who like Lisa, are celebrating 15 years of service for the county. It's no surprise to me that none of those men are in attendance today, when one of their very own was not awarded the same courtesy to be here. New Hanover County Fire Captain Steve Hunt is one of those men celebrating 15 years of serving the county. Due to his recent suspension, he's not able to be in the building today, but that does not make him any less deserving of recognition. This is a man who once buried a pet that didn't survive a house fire because the homeowner was too emotional to do that herself. This is a man who responded to a house fire where a woman was grieving the loss of her son to an illness, and Steve went back inside to get photo albums so that a grieving mother didn't have to lose the one thing she had left of her son. This is a man who multiple times has secured hotel rooms and housing for fire victims when the Red Cross could not meet the need. This is a man who in 2018 shook former Governor Roy Cooper's hand and was told job well done for being a liaison to a FEMA task force of over 100 people when Hurricane Florence devastated our community. This is a man who just last summer, after we had dinner downtown, jumped into the Cape Fear River in the dark to save a man that was drowning. This is a man who recently shook Governor Josh Stein's hand when he was awarded the Dogwood Award for saving life. This is a man who just last week shook Chief Mason with the Wilmington Fire Department's hand for receiving the Ellerbrock Award for citizen heroism. And this is a man who just shook the hand of his own chief, Donnie Hall, when New Hanover County awarded him another award for heroism for life-saving. These are just a few of the things that he deserves to be recognized for, but I'd ask you to consider that 24-hour shifts, three days a tour for the last 15 years, it's safe to assume he's done a whole lot more than just that. This is a man who responds when a family's home is on fire. This is a man who responds when your husband is having a heart attack. This is a man who responds when your wife or child has been in a car accident. This is a man who simply responds when help is needed. So on behalf of his family, his friends, his academy that's celebrating 15 years of service, his crew that he's not with right now because of his suspension, and the community of Castle Hayne who he spoke up for, we would like to acknowledge his 15 years. Chris said earlier that New Hanover County only hires the best and the brightest, and Steve Hunt is certainly one of them. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Simon Dart.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I hope everyone had a good Easter, blessed with friends and family, mine was excellent, and thank you for your time this morning, directly afterwards. My name is Simon Dart, and I represent Arrive Transport, a medical transport company headquartered here in New Hanover County. I stand before you today to represent the elderly, disabled, and less fortunate, who find themselves in desperate need of stretcher transportation. Novant's monopoly leaves many in need and has caused stretcher transportation prices to rise to an unaffordable level for a standard individual within this county. Arrive is asking to simply be allowed to help, and we offer a challenge. We would love to operate, just start with three convalescent-style stretcher vehicles, and we will donate for every three vehicles, one stretcher vehicle completely free to the public, which will allow people in need who do not have money, or simply want to go to an event and have no other option, a chance to continue to live their lives. This is a need, this is a necessity. I believe this commission to be fair and ethical, as can be seen by the beauty and growth of this county. Let's face it, y'all have had incredible growth, and it's a pleasure to live here. I, I truly love this area. Please stand with us and help us help others. At this time, I'd like to offer for any questions.
Anybody got anything?
No.
Hi, no.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Patricia Lawler?
My name is Patricia Lawler, and I'm the chair of the New Hanover County Library Advisory Board. On behalf of the board, I want to thank you all for your support of our public libraries and your recent support of funds for the new North Chase Library branch. I understand you'll be discussing funding for a county school system in your next budget work session. During these deliberations, we hope you will consider additional funds for library programs and services, as ours libraries, the main library, Pine Valley, Northeast and Pleasure Island, serve as force multipliers for our county education system. These libraries and dedicated staff serve all students in our county, regardless of their age or the schools they attend. Our librarians help children learning to read, middle school students who need homework help, high school seniors exploring career paths, and adults who want to learn a new language or explore local history. As more people move to New Hanover County, the demand for library services continues to increase. The county's mission is to provide equitable opportunities and exceptional public services. Exceptional public services require exceptional professional employees. So as you continue your budget deliberations, please consider how our libraries can help you fulfill the county's mission. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lawler. Tom Brynberry?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I'm the president of the Friends of the Library Incorporated, New Hanover Friends of the Library Incorporated, a not-for-profit created during our bicentennial year of 1976 to advocate for support and provide service to the county's library. The county is prioritizing limited funding resources for county operations that begin soon in the new fiscal year, and the Friends of the Library wanted to express appreciation for your support to the library and the efforts that significantly improve the quality of life for residents. The library is like no other entity. It serves newborn to 100-year-old individuals with all levels of income through all walks of life for the purposes of improving their quality of life. The library is truly a value-added county asset. We all appreciate your long and strong support for the library, its staff, and its allocation of necessary resources. This county is not served with just a single library as it was back when we started. Through your foresight and commitment, we all enjoy the main downtown library, as well as libraries now at Northeast, Pleasure Island, and Pine Valley. Soon we'll have a new library downtown built specifically for the purposes of a state-of-the-art library, as well as funding for a new library at North Chase. Thank you for building these new libraries that better meet customer needs and enhance and ensure a strong quality of life in our thriving community. My only purpose here this morning is to say thank you on behalf of the Friends of the Library for your investment in this service and the resources to continue the many varied events, programs, and presentations, as well as the new opportunities that the new libraries will afford us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Manager, do you have anything?
Commissioners, just as a reminder, the, the board does have a budget work session at 1:30 back at the Government Center.
Mr. Chair, I do have a comment, and just for the public, just want you to know that the reason that you don't see us comment during public comment is traditionally, and you could certainly jump in here if you need to, if I'm wrong, it is an opportunity for the public to address the board and to bring, to bring things to our attention, not necessarily for a back-and-forth conversation. That would be something that would be put on the agenda at another time. But so, but thank you for bringing that, and Ms. Miller, thank you for speaking up about the fireman's accomplishments, I appreciate you doing that, and the, the transport fellow, that's why you didn't hear us say anything, is because that's why, is for you to bring things to our attention, but not necessarily for discussion. Not that we don't want to have a discussion with any of you, but we do, we do hear you when you do public comment. Just wanted to be clear on that.
Mr. Attorney? Okay, all right, anybody else?
No, sir, Mr. Chair.
This meeting is adjourned.